All set?
She's on her way.
Yeah, we're all set.
Okay.
Go live.
All right, thank you. Uh, we're gonna, uh, come to order here and, um, before we start, I'm just gonna ask everybody to turn their cellphones off. I, I know, um, we have a habit of even our own going off, but it comes, it comes distracting when uh, uh, people get phone calls, so if you don't mind, just put them on mute. Can everybody rise? We've got to state, uh, the pledge of allegiance.
Greg?
Yeah? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you, guys, I appreciate that. Before we stop, I'm just gonna introduce the members that are up here tonight. We have a full board. Uh, actually Greg Logan is missing, but starting to my left is Bob Adams, Ken Pacheco, he's the vice chairman, myself as the chairman, Zach Karen, and Jason Quinn, and Roz, who's our secretary, is right over there, she should be here in a second. Um, I know some people wanna get out of here in a hurry, so we're just gonna jump right in. Our first case is case number zero eight seventeen. Because I, I live on Maple Swamp Road, Zach and I, who are both, uh, he's my son, cannot hear this case. So Ken Pacheco, who is the vice chairman, is going to take over at this point. Um, Zach and I are just going to be regular participants, just like everybody else in, is, in the audience. So we're going to actually, I'm not going to remove myself from the head, table here, it's going to take me too long, but Zach is gonna come sit out with the audience. Thank you.
So when, uh, either Peter Karen or Zach Karen speak on this, they're not speaking as board members, they're speaking as abutters. So, uh, I'm gonna read the article that was in the newspaper first, and then I'm gonna have, uh, three members. This was the article that was in the newspaper, it was published twice. Uh, two four, twenty-four seventy-seven Maple Swamp Road in Dayton, legal notice, town of Dayton, Board of Appeals hearing, Dayton Town Hall, lower level, nine seventy-nine Somerset Avenue, May twenty-fourth, twenty-seventeen, at seven P M. You are hereby notified upon the petition of Irene Chatter. It's Chatter, right?
Chater.
Chater. Long A. I'm gonna say Chatter all night, but Chater. Uh, for a property located at twenty-four, twenty-four seventy-seven Maple Swamp Road, North Dayton, Massachusetts, shown on an assessive map, six lot number thirty-three, for determination of the building inspector's decision pursuant to zoning bylaws sections, article twenty-six-ten and twenty-six-twenty, appendix V, table of dimensional regulations of the town of Dayton, zoning, uh, bylaws, in order to allow a variance the way required furnished to create two buildable lots, uh, with one already having existing dwelling. Board of Appeals, Peter Karen, Ken Pacheco, Robert Adams, Greg Logan, Zachary Karen, Jason Quinn. This was published on May ninth, and May sixteenth in the newspaper, and all the appropriate laws have been notified of this. About to pick up.
Bob Adams, Ken Pacheco, and Jay Quinn.
So who's going to, uh, present the case? The way it's gonna work is that, uh, Mr. Chater, you're gonna present the case, the board will ask you some questions, uh, you can rebut our questions, uh, that we asked you, if you have any, uh, concerns. But then we're gonna let the abutters have an opportunity to address it, any question that they have regarding your, uh, variance they, you're requesting. And then, uh, we'll ask some more questions, or talk about a little bit more, we may or may not make a decision, uh, tonight. Uh, you, we could make it after you leave, we could, we could make it while you're here, so if you wanna stay till the end or whatever, or we may make a decision right away, you know, the answer, uh, pretty quick. So, all those, uh, members here, do you have a map?
Ken, do you have a list of the abutters that were notified on this?
Yes, I gave her a copy today.
Yeah, it would be in that manila envelope.
Okay, do you want to, uh, present the case, let the board know what you're looking for?
Yes, uh, originally, I purchased the lot with the existing house that I built, uh, from Weaver, who was one of the original owners in the whole area. And, uh, this particular lot had a hundred ninety-eight feet of frontage, uh, which was two feet short, I presume of the requirement, and it was grandfathered in at the time.
When did you purchase the property?
Uh, who did I think?
When, when did you purchase?
Uh, I believe it was nineteen seventy-four.
That was after our bylaws.
That was quite a while back, yes, and, and, uh, the, uh, existing lot was grandfathered in when I purchased it. After that, uh, quite a bit of time after that, I purchased, uh, an adjoining lot from Mr. Eagleson, which was all, uh, a lot owned by Weaver, the same person. It had changed hands through Mr. Eagleson. And, uh, this lot is all outlined by stone wall. Uh, Mr. Dyer has informed me, he, he did a survey of the entire property, and he informed me that these walls are very accurate, and, uh, I would like to maintain the historical value of them and so forth. So, uh, what I am asking, uh, the variance for is to, uh, maintain the existing lots that I had and allow the, uh, other lot that I bought to be maintained in the same fashion that it is now. Uh, I don't plan on doing anything with the other lot. I'm going to hold it, uh, for my son, and, uh, that's, as some told about it.
Do you have any questions, Bob?
Is the town water on X Street?
No.
No, no town water?
No, no sewage, no.
No sewage on that?
So she would have to have two hundred fifty feet.
Right, she's, she's asking for fifty-two to two feet.
The adjoining lot already has a septic design. And I purchased, we've had, uh, an accepted, uh, septic design.
The other lot is three hundred and fifty feet?
Yes, something like that.
Yeah, three hundred and fifty feet. Any other questions?
I was just wondering if there would be any interest in, each one requires two hundred and fifty feet, but just add the fifty feet from the other lot, you still, you've got two conforming lots.
What, my conversation with, uh, with you was that, uh, you didn't wanna break up the lots. That when you purchased these, the first lot, and you got the second lot, you didn't realize, like most people don't realize, that they get married. And, you know, other than being on a Z D A or planning board, most people don't know that, so it becomes one lot, and you have to have it divided again.
I was never told that at the time.
And most people aren't told that, but that's just the way.
Well, since I could've put that lot in my son's name.
If you put in your son's name, uh, you would not be here. You would've saved, you would've saved yourself.
Yep.
Developers do it all the time, they know the law and stuff, but it does.
Well, the realtor did not inform me, no one informed me.
Probably it wasn't when you bought it in nineteen seventy-four, man.
No.
Well, she, when she purchased the second one, though, I don't know what, when you bought it.
I don't, I don't recall the exact date.
But obviously it's after seventy-four, um, they wouldn't necessarily have told that.
I don't think that requirement was in existence at that.
I don't know when it became law, but it's a, it's a state law, not the town.
I think that came about after, I'm sure it just.
So what you're asking for, it's my understanding that you're asking to go back to the pre-existing lots that you had before. And I also, if you went with the two fifty on the one ninety-eight, you actually would break up that stone wall that's on the property, which.
And I have two, two existing deeds for.
Do you have any tax bills that say that?
Do I have what?
Tax bills, tax bills. You pay taxes.
Oh, yeah, that, that's.
The bills. Does it state on the tax bill what the lot was, uh, taxed, the rate, what it was taxed at? Can we find that out?
I, I know for a fact that she gets one tax bill for both properties, if that's what you're asking.
Okay, so it's married, then?
Yes, and that, and that's the law, but she has two, uh, deeds, and that's what you were going on when you, uh, tried to sell the, the property. Is that, is that correct? Jason, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Are there any, uh, abutters here that would like to speak on, have any questions?
Yeah.
Could you identify yourself?
Yeah, Richard Lee, I'm an abutter on Maple Swamp Road. I have absolutely no problems with what she's asking for, I think it's a great idea. Um, from my, my understanding, from tonight, you're saying there's three hundred and fifty feet of frontage on the existing lot that she purchased later on?
Later on, yeah.
Uh, can you give us what the depth is, and what the, what the acreage would be?
Well, I can tell you that, um, the original lot, the one that has a hundred ninety-eight feet of frontage, according to this, is nine point four acres, and it goes back and goes beyond, uh.
It's an L shape.
L shape, it goes beyond the second, the second lot.
It looks to be at least five hundred feet.
Yeah, in addition to that, she's, uh, purchased or was given a lot adjacent to, on the other side, on the, you're facing a lot on the left-hand side, uh, an acre and a half, I don't know if you purchased it or was given to you, do you, you have some?
No, I purchased that from my neighbor.
There's no, there's no frontage, it's, it's out of triangle, but it, there's no frontage, so you haven't added any frontage, uh, on that. And the other lot, the one that has three hundred fifty, uh, feet frontage, has two and a half acres.
That's two hundred.
But it's asking the depth.
Uh, it doesn't.
Looks like there's two fifty-eight here, and, on this lot, it goes back as far as, just close to five hundred feet back.
It's five hundred feet with?
It looks to be about that, sir, I don't have an exact measurement.
Okay.
Do you wanna take a look at the map, or you wanna?
Yeah, that would be great.
It doesn't, uh.
About eight hundred feet, all the way back.
I was guessing.
Yeah.
It's a lot.
That's two point five. Ken, just so I'm aware, they're, they're gonna take two lots and make it into one, is that, was that what I'm understanding?
No, they, um, Mr. Chater purchased a lot that's a hundred ninety-eight feet, has a house on it.
Right, right.
Then later on, she purchased the second lot, and the, uh, state law says that, once you purchase two lots adjoining each other, one owner, they come, they become merged or married.
Gotcha.
So it's all one lot, so she's trying to sell the original lot with a house.
Okay.
And the attorney came across this law that says that they've married now, she'd have to either come before the zoning board to go back to the original, uh, dimensions, or go in front of the planning board and get it to conform.
And there's also another statute, I believe in Massachusetts, thou shall not disturb the rock walls, because you're trying to maintain the historic nature of it all, so.
No, but it would, it would, because it would be, uh, the wall was the absolute part of the other property, one ninety-eight, part of that, uh, stone wall, would be in that property. We did have, we just tried to pass a bylaw preserving, uh, historic, uh, stone walls in town. Hundred years or older, it didn't pass, so I don't, I don't know about state law, but I know as a bylaw in town, we don't have that. Could you identify yourself, please?
Sure, Steve Seleski, live at two six eight five Maple Swamp Road, I abut Irene as well. I don't particularly have an issue with this, I do have a concern, I don't know if it can be addressed at this particular juncture, but the larger of the two lots, mm, I'm curious as to what the plan is for the larger of the two lots. You know, it's a large chunk of land, my concern is if it's broken up, I'm just thinking a lot, like into subdivision or something of that nature.
We can, uh, just so you know, we can make it a condition that I'm leaning towards, that, that only one house be on each lot, which means it can't be developed, can't put a road in, or anything like that, so I would, I would be asking that be the condition, if we approve this, that they be conditioned on the one hundred ninety-eight feet of frontage, which has already got one house, there are no additional houses, that's the big lot, that's nine and a half, actually eleven acres of land. And on the second lot, which is two and a half acres of land, that only one house, that's all we'll have for the frontage for one house anyway, but, uh, it can't be developed.
I would be amicable with that.
That's good to hear.
He's got three hundred and fifty foot frontage on that lot.
Yeah, I'm just saying, he, we're gonna ask that, at least I'm gonna ask, as a condition, if we approve this, uh, that only one house be on each lot, so, there's already an existing house here, so no additional houses, and on the new lot, that you're gonna keep and not sell at this, at this time, uh, that only one house be built in that lot. So, does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, yes, sir.
Are there any other questions? Any other questions?
Sorry, will there be a draft or something before it's finalized, are you guys just gonna make your decision?
No, if it's made, that decision's made tonight, we send it to our attorney, attorney writes a decision, we look at it, make sure it's been written correctly, obviously she's an attorney, she knows more about this than, than we do.
And then it gets published, or?
We, well, they'd be on record at, at town here.
Okay.
They'd be on record, once it's signed, and we, we, once we approve it and sign it, uh, any abutter, anybody in town, anybody at all, can appeal this decision. They've got twenty days after we sign off on this to appeal it.
Okay.
You appeal to the superior.
Yeah, as it stands right now, I don't particularly have an issue, just that's my one concern, that the larger problem.
Understand that. Any other questions? I know Greg, you've kinda walked into this, and you're not, you're not avoiding them on this, I don't know if you have any questions with. Uh, there were two lots, uh, Mr. Chater, uh, purchased, uh, the lot that has a hundred ninety-eight feet of frontage.
Yep.
Has nine and a half acres, plus the additional, on the left-hand side, an acre and a half, so it's eleven acres of land. And then later she purchased the second lot, uh, that has three hundred fifty, uh, feet of frontage, two and a half acres of land. And because she purchased both of them in her name, the state law says that they marry each other, so they attempted to sell the lot with a house on it, and the attorney came up with the fact that they've now married, so they're coming, she's coming before us.
To separate.
To go back to the original dimensions, and on the property, the three hundred fifty feet of frontage, there's an historic, uh, stone wall on it that would be busted up if they had to, uh, get to forming lots. Any other questions? Any member have any, uh, questions? I'm gonna make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve this petition, is there a second?
With the condition, with your condition on it?
Yes, with the condition that each lot, thanks for bringing up each lot, can only have one, uh, house on it. The existing, original lot has one house, no additional houses, and the second lot can't put more than one house on it.
Can I, you making the motion, or you going to?
I'm making the motion.
In a second.
Any discussion on that? Oh, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, there's no opposed, uh, could we state the reasons why we want to, uh, reapprove this?
Uh, my big reason was that, uh, we, your condition of one house on each lot, um, makes, makes me feel better about the decision, so that was my, my main reason.
My main, uh, reason is that these were two separate, existing lots, who worked before, that can work in the future, and it has the historic, uh, stone wall on it that I'm, I'm concerned about, also that you've made a condition that only one house can be on each lot.
Yeah, my reason is to stand that the, was originally sold as a buildable lot, one has three hundred and fifty, other one is a hundred ninety-eight. I can't, there is no opposition from any of their abutters, and I see no reason why I shouldn't revert back to where the original was.
Okay, like I said earlier, uh, once we approve it, uh, it goes to our attorney, it may take up to thirty days, unfortunately, to have that decision written, and then we'll be notified that it's been written and it's been approved, we'll sign off on it, we've got twenty days after that, any abutter can appeal it in superior court, and then after that, you can sell the property the way you want.
Will I be notified by mail?
I'm not sure. Roz, does the petition, does the petition get notified of the decision? Does she get a copy of the written decision?
Yeah, yeah. Anyone that would like to request one can, and we'll see your copy.
And do we need an extension signed?
That's what I'm asking.
Okay, so. So we've got, yeah, we've got a hundred days to make that decision, to have a decision signed, a hundred days from when you initiated, initiated this petition. So we're gonna check to see when that started, if, if we feel that's gonna go beyond the hundred days, we're gonna, we would ask you to sign an extension on that, but we're gonna find out now how many days, uh, we have left, I don't know. I'm not sure exactly when you petitioned, do you remember? I know you, you wanted to be at the April meeting, but it was too late, but I'm not sure when you actually signed off on the paperwork.
I think it was April sixteenth.
But wasn't it not?
I have April sixteenth.
That's when I had the first meeting, I was talking, participating, and I think I, he's talking about.
Yeah, the application was April sixteenth, so we were way under the.
Yeah, so we don't, uh, we won't need an, uh, an extension, uh, form to be signed, it was April sixteenth.
The application is sixteenth.
This is about forty days into it, roughly forty days, and we've got sixty days to get everything done quite fast, if we can't get it done in sixty days, that should be our problem, and that yours.
I have a question. So this, it essentially reversed back to where it was before, now does the current deeds that in existence is fully enforced, or do new deeds get created?
I think you're gonna have to, reg, register this decision, um, the registry deeds, and have this put out on the deed, that they go back to the original law. Because you now have a.
You got the original deeds.
Yeah, but now this condition.
Yeah, but now you have a condition, uh, you can only build one house on each lot, so that has to be. I'm sure, Mr. Adams, bring it to Jack.
They, you've gone and done this, if you don't act on this within two years, this will revert, was it? We, they only have two years on our zoning rights, this will revert back, you need to change, change how it's written, in the deed, two different names, something, sell it.
Well, they, it can, it can stay in her name because she's selling the lot, and then the other lot.
Right, the other lot will stand alone. But if it goes past two years, you're gonna have to come back and ask us for a continuation, is what I'm trying to tell you.
Understood.
So we're all set with the, uh, the time and everything else on that, Roz?
Well, if the other lot, I'm trying to understand what Bob said.
But one will already be sold.
Right, one will already be sold, so. Well, okay, then it, then this, you don't have to endure it, I was just trying to let you know that if it stays in her, both her names, again, the same thing, conditions.
All lots remain the same as today, within two years, then we have another issue, guy, just for that.
And we may not be so eager to prove it.
There might be somebody different here.
Understood.
We're all set on that case then, I guess? Thank you, you're all set.
If it doesn't go through, you can come back and ask for an extension.
Yeah, you can ask for a six months extension, if two years come up, you can come back to call the board and ask. So you're not gonna be sleeping by seven thirty, unless you fall asleep in the car.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Guys, it's nice seeing you again. Good luck on that ride home. This is, uh, the next case, it's nice seeing you guys. The only map I have was the map, so don't use this, uh.
I have some large plans, but I didn't have small plans, so.
You're cutting, if you're coming, if you're coming. So like, the Duncan Owens is that, the Duncan Owens is like over here, right?
Wanna take this, then sort it home, whatever, take it home. Okay, am we turning the case back, uh, this hearing back to, uh, Chairman Peter Karen?
Okay, this is gonna be for Eric W. Perry, this is gonna be case number, uh, zero nine seventeen, Abutters here.
Okay, I'm gonna read the, uh, the notice that was written in the paper first, and then we're gonna, uh, yeah, you can sit up right over there, but I want the public also be able to, uh, take a look at it. This was in, uh, May, uh, ninth, uh, two thousand seventeen's paper, this is the legal notice that was printed, uh, it says here, you are hereby notified upon the petition of Eric W. Perry for property located at two eighty-one Tree Mart Street, North Dayton, Massachusetts, shown on assessive map nine, lot number, number thirty-three, for a variance to subdivide an existing property into two lots, leaving existing sing, single-family dwelling on lot number two with a hundred thirty-seven point zero eight frontage, and constructing the new single-family dwelling on lot number one with a hundred thirty-two point eight zero frontage. For, uh, decision pursuant to the town decision zoning bylaws, section twenty-six-ten and twenty-six-twenty, dimensional requirements for principal structures, uh, and appendants fee, and assigned by the Board of Appeals, Peter Karen, Ken J. Pacheco, Robert W. Adams Senior, Greg Logan, Zachary Karen, and Jason Quinn, uh, and, uh, Bob Adams, can I please have three members for this case?
Mr. Chairman, can I have an abutters list on this, I believe there is pop property on this.
Okay.
You're being a monopolist.
Okay, Jason Quinn, Zach Karen, Bob Adams.
And before we present this case, um, I wanna go over just a couple of the rules, just in case you didn't hear what, uh, the previous, um, cases were. What's gonna happen, uh, and how it's gonna be laid out, is the two of you, is it the two of you, will have the chance to present your case, uh, to the board. The, uh, once your case is presented, the members of the board probably will have questions for you, we'll start from the left to go to the right. And, uh, once our questions are satisfied, we're gonna open it up to everybody in the audience who might have questions for you. They'll direct the questions to the board and, and to you, and hopefully we'll, to be able to satisfy their questions. At the end of that, we'll close, uh, we'll go back to the board to see if they have any more questions, if they don't, we'll close the public input. And what will happen tonight is, we may or may not make a decision. Uh, you are more than welcome to hang around for the evening, we have a couple more, or one or two more cases after you guys. And, um, what will happen is if we decide to discuss the case after we're all done, you may hang around and listen to our discussion, you'll have no more further input, you'll be just here to hear the case. And, um, what typically happens is, uh, unlike with the case that you just heard, we usually do not decide on, on the night of, of the hearing. Uh, especially with a case like this, I already know that I'm gonna go on, wanna go out and see this lot, uh, because what, what you're typically doing is taking, uh, a lot that is in, uh, is, that has sufficient size, and making, uh, it's a conforming lot, and taking it and making it two non-conforming lots. So that's a tough thing to do, it's a trick that we never allow, um, trick, wrong word, it's something that we, we don't usually allow. So, um, the, the, you're gonna have to prove that there's, there's a desperate reason to allow that to happen. Um, so with that said, uh, like I said, we may or may not make a decision this evening, but guaranteed by the next case, I mean, the next, uh, hearing, which is the third Wednesday in June, w, we will have a, a decision for you. Any questions on the procedure?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, gentlemen, uh, whoever is presenting, presenting your case, just give your name and, and ready to go.
Okay, uh, good evening, my name's Peter Lavoy, I'm the project engineer for this project, and I work for Landmark Site Design. Um, here tonight representing Eric Perry, who's in the front row. So basically, the project's on the corner of Tree Mart Street, which runs along the bottom here, which runs along the bottom here, and Old Somerset Ave, so it's kinda on a corner. As you can see, it's an odd-shaped lot, it comes like this, it has frontage on Tree Mart, which is one thirty-seven, and tr, uh, frontage on Old Somerset Ave, which is one thirty-two. Um, we have an existing house right in the center of the lot. We have an existing driveway out to Tree Mart, and we have an also, another driveway that comes out onto Somerset, so it has two driveways on both of them. The existing house is serviced by Somerset Ave with a sewer line that comes to it and water. Uh, it's basically grass, the whole lot is basically glass, uh, grass, there is some, uh, trees within it, but a, a majority of it is grass. So basically, what we wanna do is, we wanna s, subdivide the two, subdivide the one lot, which is roughly two point two acres in size. Lot two is gonna be roughly fifty-four thousand square feet in size, we're gonna keep the existing house, we're gonna stub, uh, the sewer and water on, uh, Old Somerset, and we're gonna connect to the, the sewer on Tree Mart. And then the proposed house is on lot one, which is roughly, you know, thirty-nine thousand square feet in size, a little bit more than that. And we're gonna have, we're gonna use the existing curb cut for the driveway, we're gonna put in a new s, water service, and we're gonna put in a new sewer service. The plan was changed, this was, uh, submitted to the sewer department, and we made changes to the plan, uh, from the original. I revised the sewer connection with their recommendations, and also I revised the sewer connection onto, uh, Old Somerset Ave. They have not seen, I don't think they have seen the revised plan yet. Um, well, basically, you know, we're here because of the frontage, um, the required frontage in this zone is one seventy-five, and the two frontages that we have on both streets are existing, are under, undersized, like I said, one thirty-two here and one thirty-seven, so the shape of the lot kinda determines what we can do, I mean, we could put in a cul-de-sac and then have the required frontage, 'cause we would have enough area, but then, you know, there would be more roadway to, uh, the town would have to maintain, also drainage. So by, by subdividing the, the big lot into two frontage lots, then there's no road, there's no, really no, uh, cost to the town in the, in the, later on in the future, for snow plowing and other, other roadways, um, requirements. I mean, that's basically it, we're just requesting, uh, a variance for the, for the two frontages, which don't conform now. I mean, all the lots in the area don't meet the one seventy-five. A lot of them are like, even if you look at these two, this is one forty, this was one ten, their driveway is raised, when you go out there, and if you go out there and look at it, their driveway is coming off of Old Somerset, and that's only a hundred and ten.
Building on lot two, is that existing now, you're stating?
That is, yes.
And it's currently serviced with the sanitary out of Somerset, correct?
That is correct, yep.
And you're willing to change all that to move it on? And you're willing to change all that to move it on to the other?
Correct, the plumbing's gonna have to be changed inside, and then we're gonna have to tie into Tremont.
There is no building on lot one, as it is.
There is no building now.
So the furniture for this lot is actually Tremont Street, you keep on referring to Old Somerset Ave, but the furniture is actually in Tremont Street. So you're asking for a lot to be built on a road that doesn't have, actually have furniture on it?
They both have furniture in two streets.
But this is, this is, this is legal, but it does have furniture here, though.
It has land on the road, but honestly, because furniture for that property as it exists right now is on Tremont.
The legal front, yeah, okay.
Just for clarification on the cul-de-sac, you said it might be more of expense for the town. Just for the record, if the town doesn't approve that road, we don't have any expense.
No, I understand, that's correct, we would have to, we would have to design a small cul-de-sac and meet the requirements of the town.
My point was that you were saying it was gonna be expensive to the town, but the town doesn't have to take that on.
Right, that's true, if it's not approved, it would not have to.
So where's the hardship?
The hardship is the shape of the lot and the existing frontage that's currently there.
You got a house on it.
The lot is oversized, so we still.
You've got a house on it. Leave it alone. Is it simple as that?
If that's the case, that's fine, I just didn't want anybody else to do it, if I sell the property.
If you sell the property, you don't want anybody else to do it?
To be able to get a variance and put another, get another lot in it, that's what my main goal is.
You wanna stop somebody else from doing it.
Well, if.
If he's not allowed to do it, then he doesn't want somebody else to do it.
If I'm not allowed to do it, I don't want anybody else to do it either. I plan on selling the property, my brother and I are gonna sell, let him move out, I'll be honest with you. And it's just a matter of, fifty-nine years ago, I moved in there as a kid, and my father told me, well, when we're dead and gone, and split the lots up and sell the property. But with water, electric, and sewage and gas on both streets, I thought it'd be an opportunity.
So, you're, that's purely financial then, a financial gain, or you just don't want anybody else to do it?
No, we're gonna sell the property, I plan on selling the property.
Right.
Right, so, okay, if you wanna look at it that way, yeah, it's gonna be a financial gain, I guess, in one sense.
So, I mean, for the board to approve it, there's gotta be a hardship. And just putting a house there for the sake of putting a house there, or what you're telling me is just so that nobody else can do it? I wanna help you out.
I understand.
I wanna have a reason to approve it.
I understand, believe me, I understand.
When residents come before us, our number one goal is to help them. And give me a reason to say, okay, here's a reason to say, it's all right to put a house there.
Well, it would conform with the rest of the houses that are in the area, that's.
It's bigger. One is fifty-nine, what'd you say, two point two acres, and the other one's thirty-nine thousand square feet, they're bigger than both lots of each side of it.
Right, lot two is fifty-four thousand, and lot one is thirty-nine. I mean, it meets all the requirements except the frontage, and that's because of the shape of the lot. And that's our hardship, is the shape of the lot. I mean, we have frontage, we don't have legal frontage, but we do have a line on a public road, on Old Somerset Ave, which is one thirty-two, which is greater than the, greater than the lot next door that's accessing the same road. And then, it's gonna be much bigger than this lot here, this lot's only seventeen thousand square feet in size, I put the lot area rate on it. So this lot is only seventeen, this lot is twenty-one, so these lots are larger than the surrounding neighboring lots.
And, um, what's up with the sewer department, you haven't, um?
Well, they had a sewer department meeting, and they had me make the changes, but I did not get the plans back in time for them to review.
Didn't have the right pitch, Peter, it's.
Yeah, the pitch was too, it was too flat, it was one percent.
Okay. Greg, do you have any concerns?
Well, I have a concern, you got the pitches of the corner, what's the lot, uh, we'll call it map nine, lot twenty-five? How many feet of frontages on that particular lot?
I'm not sure, I'd have to check that, I know that's a, that lot frontage is here, and this is all, like, wooded.
Bob Adams, do you have any concerns?
Well, like you, we're not in the business of creating two non-conforming lots, but this particular lot here, in fact, we, I don't see how we can really do it. This lot shows two different frontages on two different streets, so it's not like you're.
That would have to get changed.
Yeah, the address would have to be changed, you'd have to do, I don't know how you go about, there would be, one address would be Tremont Street, the other Somerset Ave.
Correct.
And that's what makes this one unique, as opposed to two non-conforming lots, but it never conformed in the beginning, because it doesn't have enough frontage anyway, but you have both sewer and water, so that's a plus in your favor. As it is, and I'm gonna have to take this under advisement, I wanna take a look at it too. I'm pretty sure that's where Frank Rogers's house was on the corner.
Frank, no, that was Lemus, that house there is Lemus.
No, the other corner.
This one, across.
Old Somerset Ave.
On this side?
Yeah. Is that in that, I don't know.
It used to be Lobes here, the Lobes.
Okay.
Merrill Lobes, when she.
I thought it was lost, but Frank.
It may very well be now, but.
He passed away recently.
Oh, no, it's, this is Tremont.
It's in the corner of Tremont Street and Old Somerset Ave.
No, we're just trying to relate to Dunkin' Donuts. So I think Dunkin' Donuts would.
Down over there.
Ken, do you have any concerns?
I don't have any concerns, I would like to listen to the abotters.
Okay.
With their response.
Zach, do you have any concerns?
I want to hear from the abotters.
I have a question, we keep saying it was a, it's a conforming lot, and we're turning it into a non-conforming lot.
It was non-conforming, both times.
Exactly, so it was never, it was never really a conforming lot.
When it was built, it probably was.
Exactly.
Fifty-nine years ago, it probably was, I mean.
Yes, before we had town bylaws, it was a conforming lot.
Okay.
It was, if you said fifty-nine years ago.
And then how, um, how soon is the revised sewer plant coming, I mean, how much, how much longer till you see it?
You have it.
Ah, you have it, I, we, we did.
Is that the revised one?
That is correct, yeah.
With the, with the right pitch?
With the right slope. We just have to get that to the sewer department, which we will.
Okay, that's, okay. And then just to hear from the abotters, if there are any.
Okay, is that, is that a juice?
Yep.
Are there any abotters that wanna be heard for Mr. Perry case? Everybody else is here just for the show. Is there anything else, Mr. Perry, that you wanna add?
Well, like I said, it's, for me, it's, I don't wanna lose out on a financial gain, and you're right, absolutely, I'm not gonna lie, you know? That's, that's basically it, I would, I'd be heartbroken to move away, then come back and see a house there, which I asked to be able to do, you know what I'm saying?
The only thing I can say about that, if we deny it, it can't come back before the board for two years, we could have different members here in two years, the new owner could come back and try to, it's, it's, there's no guarantee. We kinda look at the cases that were heard before, and how we dealt with them, but there's no guarantee that's.
Somebody's throwing.
Yeah, I understand that.
I think, personally, I think it's a reasonable request, the other, lots have furniture very similar to this, and when you divide it, the, would automatically, the furniture would be on Old Somerset Ave with the other lot, because there's no other access to that property. But I think Peter indicated that we would like to take a look at the property, so I'm typically gonna make a decision.
Right, Mr. Perry, were we right?
Go ahead, Zach, will you go ahead and say something?
No, Jim has hand up, but.
Oh, okay, Jim, go ahead, sir.
Um, so I have a couple comments, first, I would concur that the frontage that's proposed and existing on Tremont Street is consistent with the houses in the neighborhood. The other thing is, this house is fifty-nine years old, had Mr. Perry's dad wanted to prior to the enactment of zoning, he would've had two lots there, there would've been two house lots. So, um, you know, I certainly don't have it to pine either way, it's up to the board, but I don't think it would be inconsistent with the neighborhood, which is, which is the basis for the variance.
Right, it's not, it's not inconsistent with the neighborhood, it fits right in. My concern is, when we approve something like this, you have to have a reason. It has to meet some kind of criteria, and it hasn't yet. Just the fact that it meets other lots in the neighborhood is not a reason to give.
Right.
To, 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 to say it conforms, and still taking and creating a non-conforming lot without a valid reason.
I, I would, I would. I would, I would agree, yet respectfully disagree, because this lot was not created post-zoning, it was prior to zoning. So, this lot conformed to zoning indicting, our zoning changes created non-conforming.
Well, technically, it's one lot.
Right.
So.
With frontage on two streets.
Which is not continuous, like you said earlier.
Regardless of the frontage on two streets, we're still one lot here, that wants to be subdivided.
Right.
Take away the frontage on two streets, that's a nice feature, but take that frontage away, it's almost like what she had. It's, it's all married now, it's, it's.
Well, you can take away the frontage on two streets, but if you didn't have the frontage on Old Somerset, they wouldn't even be here.
Right.
Peter, can I step in?
Sure, absolutely.
If you add the two frontages together, I know it's not continuous frontage, but you have two hundred and sixty-nine feet of frontage for this lot.
Right.
It's on two different streets, so to me, that's, the topography of the shape of the lot, it, to me, creates a, is a hardship. He has two hundred and sixty-nine feet, he could have one with a hundred and fifty-foot frontage with town water and sewage, you meet the requirement, and have one with seventy-five foot of frontage, but they're two different streets, so this makes this one very unique. And that where it falls on the fact that it's not in, it's not, it's typical in that neighborhood.
I think the shape is, the shape is the unique feature.
Yes, it's, the shape of the land makes the hardship.
Mr. Perry, is this for sale already?
No, not yet.
So, there's no rush if we take thirty days to go look at it and make a decision?
No, no, I mean, we, my brother and I still haven't cleaned out and all this other stuff, it's been, my mother passed away in September, so, and it's.
All right, sorry to hear about your mom.
Well, it's, that's part of life.
Part of life, I guess, huh? All right, um, I'm gonna make the motion that the public input then be closed, unless you have something else changed.
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. The public input portion of this be closed?
Can you make that motion, I mean, I would remember.
Yes, you can, uh, I'm not, well, somebody else better.
All right, I'll make the motion that we close the public hearing, uh, in case, uh.
Okay, Zach's making it, Jason's seconding it, seconded, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Public input portion is closed, then someone make a motion to.
I'll make a motion that we take this under advisement.
Bob Adams, somebody second that?
I'll second that.
Okay, so what's gonna happen is, the members are going to, if they choose to, go out and take a look at the property, and, um, my guess is, come next meeting, it will be the first thing that we talk about, so that you don't have to hang around. We'll let you know at the next meeting, and we'll take a vote right away, so that you guys can get out of here. And, um, we'll get creative with the decision if we have to.
All right.
Thanks, guys, for your time.
So, are we, are we planning a public hearing?
No, I think.
At the, at the property?
I don't think we have to, I think the members can just go on their own, unless you want to.
Yeah, I don't know, somebody, somebody.
Nobody lives there right now.
Right.
And, I mean, I check the mail every day, and.
So you don't mind us walking out of the lot?
No, 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 just drive by, it's fine. Ignore it, and that's not the problem.
I'm not looking to go in, I just wanted to drive by.
It's time to think about it.
Can we keep these maps for us?
So you come back at the next meeting, and most likely we'll make a decision at the next meeting, but you won't have a say in it. So the public input is closed, this gentleman here can speak on it, and we'll discuss it later.
All right, thanks for coming, thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, the next case is gonna be case number ten seventeen, this is the solar case, is somebody here for that? Okay, come on up, everybody shaking their heads, is everybody here for that?
Nope, yep, they're walking in now.
Hello, hi, you guys here for the solar case?
Yes.
Okay, you guys wanna just sign in before we start, or have you already?
No, no, I am.
Where was the, uh?
Should we get rid of the case, that before you present it?
Sorry.
Yeah, that's. Especially in his work.
This is the one on Hart Street, correct?
Yep.
Get rid of the case, sir.
Yep. Is there two little houses, please? Okay, I'm gonna read the notice as it appears in the paper. You are hereby notified upon the petition of Kenny and Christina Aruda for a property located at five-ten Hart Street, Dayton, Massachusetts, shown on assesses map twenty, lot number one seventy-one, for a special permit pursuant to sections forty-six hundred, fifty-three hundred, and four fifty-four hundred of the town of Dayton zoning bylaws to install a low-profile ground wrapped solar array. We might need Zach on this one. Board of Appeals, Peter, sorry, the Board of Appeals, Peter Karen, Kenneth J. Pacheco, Robert W. Adams, Ken Logan, Zachary Karen, and Jason Quinn. This is, was dated five sixteen seventeen. And before we continue, can I have three members, Bob?
Ken Pacheco, Greg Logan, Zach Karen.
And, um, guys, this is gonna be for the month of June, and I just wanna make sure that everybody's gonna be here for that, who are on these cases. Any problems with the, you guys, right?
Nope.
What's the date you can, Roz, one first?
My first, yep.
I know you weren't here for how we discussed this with the previous, right, you weren't here?
We were in the hallway, you wanted to.
You were in the hallway, that's okay, this is how it's gonna go. Um, obviously, this is the board, and you're going to present the case to the board and to the audience that's here. When you're done presenting the case, the board members will have questions for you. And when the board members are done, and you're done answering the board members' questions, we are going to open it up to the abotters or anybody who's in the audience, you'll answer their questions, and then we'll come back to the board. And then, when the board is satisfied with the questions, and the audience is satisfied with their questions, we'll close the public input, and, um, we'll, at that point, make a decision as whether we're going to take it under advisement, actually, we'll discuss it with you, take it under advisement, or possibly even vote on it this evening, we'll talk about it then, and we'll go with some more details then. So, as of right now, who's presenting the case?
Well, I'm the contractor.
You're the contractor, so you're gonna present it?
Sure.
Okay, so can you just stand up and give your name to Roz's secretary?
Sure, my name's Gary Seer, company of South Coast Greenlight.
Okay, Gary, whenever you're ready.
Okay. What we're proposing to do is put a ground array on the property for Ken and Christina at five-ten Hart Street, and this ground array is a very low-profile, we call very unobtrusive solar installation. What I have here is a worth of the we had done of the whole array, okay? This is gonna be, um, our property, that you have the property planned that we had done. It's gonna take up an area that is, I believe, thirty, thirty-two by forty-two. A portion of the lot that is seventy-five feet from the front, thirty-two feet from the east side, a hundred twenty feet from the west side, and two hundred forty-six feet from the back property line. And, um, the panels are gonna be very low-profile. This is the configuration of the panels. Uh, the panels, the whole array, the width is. Height off the ground. Oh, the height off the ground is about a foot and a half.
This is not gonna move, this is.
This is not gonna move, this is a fixed, fixed, right.
Actually, can you finish your presentation before we start asking questions?
Actually, can you finish your presentation before we start asking questions?
Yeah, okay. So anyway, this is a fixed ground array in a space that is, um, as you said, right here, thirty-two by twenty-two wide, length by width, so it's very small footprint on the ground, okay? Um, it's only gonna stand about a foot and a half high off the ground, that's its maximum height. The panels are fixed, meaning that they don't, they don't move. Uh, they're at such a height that, um, when the Arudas finished landscaping their property, the only people that are gonna see them are people that walk in front of the array because they're planning on putting, uh, a screen of arborvitae around their property. So that it's gonna be very private location. And, uh, from the view from their house, the array is such a low-profile and on a slope that they're gonna plant like a hedge row between the array and the house, so they really won't even be able to see it. So the only people that are gonna be able to see this array is someone who's gonna have to walk on the property and walk in front of it on the south side where we're gonna keep the exposure to the sun, uh, wide open, to actually see the panels. And I brought a picture of an array that is done similar to that, to show you just how low this is on the ground. Right, this is an array that was done in Swansea. You can see the height of that building, that's an inverted shed that, um, standing about six feet high. Uh, these panels, you can see right here, are no more than a foot and a half off the ground. So the idea of putting an array like this is, and this is something that, you know, has been requested by many clients, is they'd like to do solar, but they don't wanna see it. And, you know, I agree with most people that solar panels are not a very beautiful thing to see. I don't like seeing them on a roof of a house myself. Uh, I think they take away from the appearance of the property and, you know, maybe the future saleability of a property, you know. But an array like this, uh, someone that has the land to do it, it's a way to have the advantage of a solar system, which in this case, they're trying to make a net zero home. We've already put a geothermal heating and cooling system in the house, so the system runs on electricity, and it runs very efficiently. Geothermal systems are, you know, about uh, twice as efficient as, let's say, a natural gas system, and three or four times more efficient than an oil or propane system. So their goal is to have a house that has as close to a zero-energy footprint as possible. And, um, you know, they're conservation-minded, uh, they embrace the use of renewable energies. Their young couple are gonna live in this house many years. So the, you know, net effect to them is they're gonna have a house that they're gonna live in, that is gonna have a very low energy cost for the foreseeable future.
Ask a question?
Sure.
Um, you had said that the only people that are gonna see it are them, or not them, anyone who's right in front of it. What about the neighbors from their second stories of their houses? They look down, wouldn't they be able to see it?
Well, unless the neighbors' houses are gonna go and look above the row of arborvitae that they plan on planting, I, I don't see how they could possibly see it.
And why the front yard went out the backyard?
Because this is the best location for, uh, getting year-round sun on the whole property.
Greg, do you have any questions? Oh, sorry, are you, are you all set?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's a pretty simple, straightforward application. I just, you know, I'm presenting, you know, the.
Whereabouts on Hart Street is this? That's what I wanted to know. Like, what's this house here? What's this lot here? Who are these?
It's intersection of Elm and Har.
Well, there's this big, uh, intersection over here.
May with the area, so this lot here is.
Once you.
Is this the corner lot?
It's the second one, uh, so it's not the corner lot, it's the next one.
The second, the lawn cabin?
Between those.
We built the house right before the law cabin.
That's pretty high. So it's rather high, it is rather high piece of land versus the one, the lot twenty.
We do have large trees right around that.
But if you see the, uh, severe foot elevation.
Yeah, I see drops.
This drops significantly. This is very low here, compared to the rest of the property.
But there's no abotters, ma'am.
And you're stating the higher elevation of the back of the yard is not sufficient to catch the rip of the sun? Cause this row here is large such trees when the sun comes up. I would have thought back here would have been better.
Sorry about that.
The lot would be in one twenty-nine, one over.
Well, what his plans are in the backyard, there's no room, cause he's gonna put a pool in here. And then where we would work it in here, there's trees on this side and that side that would offer significant shading to this location here.
Any questions, Bob?
My goal is not to see the panels myself.
You can see the house from across the road.
Bob, do you, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. I'm not voting.
Yeah, we're gonna try to.
Ken, do you have any questions?
I think, I, well, I wanna hear what the abotters say, but quite frankly, I am pleased that you're concerned about the environment. And reducing the amount of energy, my grandchildren are gonna appreciate what you guys are doing, because everyone's really gonna benefit from it. So, uh, I think it's a great idea. If what you're saying is true, that it's gonna, won't be visible, the neighbors won't see it, that's great. We might make it a condition, uh, that, that before this goes in, that the, the arborvitae be put up and the other, uh, landscaping around so that neighbors don't see it, the public doesn't see it. But we'll probably make that a condition, if it's approved, uh, to do that. So before you start putting solar panels in, that that process is done.
Zach, do you have any questions?
Just, I'm just the ones that already asked, and then I wanna hear from the abotters.
I have one more question, if you don't mind.
Sure.
My concern is, is being in the front yard. I understand you wanna put a pool. But, um, most of the solar panels are inside the houses and back the houses. Am I correct in this, that we allow?
Mm-hmm.
I don't think we can.
I think you're right.
I mean.
I don't think we can tell them where they can put it.
And I'm very familiar with this area, and I really don't see, besides the pool, um, the hardship of trying to put it in the backyard. I mean, I think it's more better for the neighborhood to put it in the backyard. But I'd like to walk the site to see this.
Yeah, I'd appreciate it if you walked the site, because really, um, I don't see how that would bother any neighbors.
Well, we'll hear what the neighbors have to say.
There's a lot of, there's, there's a lot of, along here. The screen, you can't hardly, you can't see in here now.
I know the land, the lawn cabin is so familiar.
This is, uh, very similar to Pine Hill Road.
So like I said.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
To, to actually see that array after it's done, the way the lot is now, you'd have to drive in this driveway and walk over here and look at it and stand in front of it to see it.
My concern is this land drops, it goes up dramatically from the lower house, so you're gonna see it. I, you're telling me you're not. I know you're gonna. Even if you were to have, uh, those flowers or whatever, trees, um, so, but I like to walk.
He's at the top of it.
Zach.
He's right, right on the corner of that, and then there's the lawn cabin. I know exactly what this piece of property is.
Okay. Greg, do you have any more questions?
No, I'm fine.
Zach, uh, you were talking about, you had a question about somebody from the second floor. Was it addressed earlier?
They were talking to the abotters.
I just do a, arborvitae generally grow so tall that a second story window would not be able to see over them from the second story window.
Well, they grow rapidly, but, um.
But rapidly but high enough, that's my question. Not the speed, it's the.
Well, I guess some.
You know, someone that sells two hundred-foot arborvitae is a plant though.
There are other really, really tall trees. So it's only like a gap between the really tall trees that would be planted in arborvitae, and there are some, I don't know how tall they.
So they're tr- tall trees surround your lot as well?
The, I don't know the direction, but there are around the bottom corner of the lot, right here, there's like really big trees, and there's another really big tree right here. So it's like the gap between, the, I don't know, north east or whatever, the gap that's open.
Okay.
Right near the panels.
Okay.
And like you said, we are planning on doing landscaping around it, and it's gonna be sunk in a little bit, like the lot's gonna go down.
Okay. Jason, do you have?
Sunk in here. We don't wanna see them either.
No inverter shed? You're not gonna be putting an inverter shed like, like what's on this picture here? You have a shed?
No, we're not gonna have an shed. We're gonna have, the inverters are gonna be, um, on a stand right near the array.
Okay.
But, um, they're gonna stand at like a minimum height.
Okay. And then how big is the system? How many KWs? How many kilowatts?
Uh, this system, I believe, is, um.
So basically, it's just gonna be enough to run your house, provide for your house?
That's all.
Nothing extra, nothing, nothing like that?
No, it's not gonna be a house. It's gonna be. Jason, they don't, uh, the electrical company wanna lie, you only go a certain percentage more than your actual previous months' use than on a, uh, a residential. They don't allow you to go bigger. Only a certain amount.
Which is a scam.
If they, but if they're buying, they can do it.
It is, I agree. I agree, but that's what, that's.
How many kilos would it be? It's four rows.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. I think I, I thought I had thirty. So it's twenty-four. Four rows of, uh, six.
Must be so many, like, I thought it was more, the picture anyway, so.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it comes.
I think that's.
Ten kilowatts, ten point oh five kilowatts.
Okay, that's fine. Oh, look at this picture. Exact. This is picture?
No, that's, no, that's.
It's not the exact magnitude, okay, okay.
Someone was buzzing, so.
Jason, are you satisfied, sir?
Uh, uh, one more question. Then, where's the septic? Uh, where's the location of the septic? Isn't it bet?
Yeah?
It's on the side.
It's shown on the, uh, plan, that is.
Did I miss it?
I don't see it on this.
Okay, I just wanna make sure it's not anywhere.
Septic's on the side.
East side. Septic's on the right side of the house.
Okay.
East side.
Yeah.
Behind the retaining wall.
Okay. No, I'm, I'm fine. I'm, I'm good.
I just went on, placed my chart.
Okay, does the board have any more questions for now? We'll, we'll come back now, boy. All right, we're gonna open us up to the public, and I just wanna make sure that it's one at a time, and that, just speak a little louder. And, um, just, you have to give your name so that Roz, our secretary, can record it. So, who's first? Wanna roll the dice or just?
Can I be first to report?
No, no, you're always first, Jim. Uh, good turn, go ahead.
I just have a, I just have a real quick point to make.
Sure, go ahead, whenever you're ready.
Uh, in the presentation, you had said that you're gonna make, um, uh, power year-round. But with this type of array, it's very low to the ground. One of the arguments that engineers make in determining structural loads is that the snow slides off. So in your case, you have no place for the snow to slide off. So if we have a heavy snow wi- winter, a couple feet, how are we gonna handle the snow off these panels?
You're not.
You're not.
No, you don't, there's anybody else.
So we're not gonna make that, uh, power year-round.
Most people that own solar arrays, uh, know that in January, February, and a good portion of March, depending on the type of winter we have, you can count on no production at all from your solar array. Uh, if you go back to the winter of fourteen to fifteen where we had those, uh, three blizzards like in succession, uh, I had many, many, many clients that didn't have any production for six to eight weeks.
I think it's gonna be exasperated with this because in the other systems that are high off the ground or on a roof, the minute the sun comes out and warms those panels, you get slide. Uh, so, um, I just want your, your clients to know that there may be a concern with having production over the winter throughout a year.
We appreciate that, but Gary ran all the models for us. It's a good ROI on the system.
Okay.
I mean, I have a system like this myself.
Yep.
An array just like this. And the advantage of an array like this to any other type of array is I have a soft squeegee. And, uh, if I catch the snow early enough, I can just go out and remove the snow by hand from the whole array. So, um, one thing I've experienced with my array is, uh, the most I've ever been down is a day.
Okay.
It just took me the time to use a soft squeegee to remove the snow from the array and it was back in business.
The other thing is that the, um, the inverter, and that was a good question by Jason, uh, because of the national electric code, is gonna be elevated. So it will be visible. This will be ground hugging, but the inverter will be, will be elevated.
How high?
At least three feet.
Okay. And how big is that?
Uh, it all depends. You said ten and a half?
Well, the inverters, the, the actual physical size of the inverter, it's about thirty-six inches high, about eighteen inches wide, and eight inches deep.
Eight inches deeper, how, uh, thirty-six inches high in what? I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's about that thick.
Eight, eighteen inches?
It's about thirty-six inches high and eighteen inches wide, and there's two of them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chip.
Is, uh, is there anybody else that wants to be heard?
Sure.
Hi.
Hi, uh, my name is Joyce Debona. I live at twenty-four thirty Elm Street. We're on theirs, um, northeast corner.
Okay.
Um, I had one question. Initially, um, we were told that the total size was gonna be thirty-two by forty-two, and then they said thirty-two by twenty-two, which is a.
It's thirty-two, twenty-two.
It's thirty-two feet.
It's the size that's on that plan.
Thirty-two point four-two, is that what?
Yes, thirty-two point two.
Yeah, it's what, thirty-two point four-two, or twenty-two point six.
By twenty-two or four-eight inches, yep.
Twenty-two point six.
And this is going to be in the front yard?
Yes.
As of right now?
I'm sorry?
As of right now?
As of right now.
Do you wanna take a look at the, uh?
Well, do you wanna see the pictures I have of their backyard from my house? If it goes in the backyard, that's all I'm gonna see. So.
Okay.
This is in the front yard.
You know, but that's another issue if and when you get to that. Um, my other thing is, you stated that you're very conservation-minded, and that's why they wanna do this and all this. I have one question. Why do you leave huge floodlights on all night long?
I don't even have a floodlight, ma'am.
Well, all right, maybe it's a spotlight or whatever, but outside your home.
It's a rare spotlight.
You know what, we're not gonna, we're not gonna go down that, yeah, that's not a motion that we get, stay with this guy.
I don't, I don't have a. That's not my property. I don't have a spotlight. You guys are mixing up properties, that's not mine. You guys are welcome to come by my house, but my property has no spotlight.
Well, guys, guys, we're not here to discuss that.
I don't wanna discuss the spotlights.
That, I have to defend myself, there's no spotlight.
No, we're not gonna discuss that, that particular issue.
No, it wasn't an attack, it was just a, maybe, maybe you didn't know that it was on.
No, no, that's, that's fine.
No, I'm pretty sure I know that I don't have a spotlight.
Okay, guys. All right, that's it. Um, anybody else have a question concerning, ma'am, was that it?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I have Steve Como on forty-nine Hart Street. I live directly at the cross.
Yes.
Um, I got a bunch of concerns about.
Sure.
Solar panels going in the front yard. Since they put their house in, between putting the house in and changing the grade of the land, they destroyed, uh, the street with, uh, flooding. That's what's coming off their land right now. If they had a ground system, it's gonna take, whatever rain comes down is not gonna be absorbed. Uh, in one of the pictures, you can see that they're talking about large trees, they're deciduous. There's no ground cover and, uh, nothing covers them, wait a minute. Right now, you're talking about trees in your front yard. You just took half of them out this week.
Well, sir, I mean, it's, it's my property that I paid for. If I, I can't rely on.
But your wife just defended that they would not be easy to visible.
She said the corner.
Easy, okay.
No, it's, it's covering the corner where the solar panels are gonna go.
We're gonna have arborvitae. I don't understand the attack with, with respect to this.
Well, let's, let's kind of download it, okay, because it's.
But I mean, I paid for the application, I pay my taxes.
People have a right to ask these questions, and whether or not we're gonna let those questions go through, it's the board's decision, so.
I appreciate the reasons.
I'm really concerned about the runoff. There's no runoff from the property.
Okay, that's not an issue also before us, because we have not seen that.
So could I just address something?
Unless the solar panels, what's gonna be underneath the solar panels? Is it ground?
Which color something's gonna let the water?
Concrete.
Concrete?
Concrete, uh, full, full pad.
The whole concrete slab.
Uh, it, well, we can, we do it a number of different ways. We can do it a, uh, we do a bunch of berms that they attach to, or we do a full pad. In this case here, we're planning on doing berms, which are about eighteen-inch wide berms that land on the, on the, on the, on a row. So it'd be a row, a row, a row, a row.
Could be six pictures also.
You know, it'd be like if there's one, two, three, four, five, six rows of panels, it'd be seven berms of concrete running the same length. And it'd be about eighteen inches wide.
And where's that water gonna get diverted?
Well, water's gonna fall on the ground anyway, whether the panels are there or not.
Yeah, but the, what's underneath it, the water's not gonna sink into the ground, it's gonna run off because there's.
Gonna push it down the way.
Yeah.
And that's in the front yard, those photos that I just saw?
Yes.
Mr. Karen, just.
Uh, taken right from my driveway, driveway, looking out across the property. Um, when they say that they're gonna put stuff to hide it from people's property, you're welcome to come to my house and come to my second floor. There's no way they're gonna hide it in their front yard with some arborvitae. It'll be visible to me, um, I'm sure it'll be visible to my neighbors.
All right, if, if we do berms, to answer your question, uh, well, the, the total coverage over the ground will be three hundred and thirty-six square feet. That'll be, what'll be covered with concrete.
I'll keep a plan on putting those berms, looking at that.
Well, the berms, these are just surface walls.
Hold on one second. Looking at the property, the land with the water, uh, you'd have to go all four feet.
Looking at the part of the land with the water, uh, you'd have to go all four feet. Four feet for what? Deep. Versus what, I think you're saying eighteen inches. I don't think there'd be a need to go four feet there. Did you see those photos?
Can I ask a question?
What photos? They'll be coming right around long to the public momentarily. All right, four feet deep, you mean a concrete pier four feet deep?
Who gave you that chance?
Well, let's, let's just, I, I just see a massive runoff. And I hate to see you put these things on like a ten or a twelve or fourteen inch pad. And then, that I'm seeing there, and then these folks are gonna be like, all of a sudden, my, my, my pad is settled. Which, that shows me, whoa, just looking at the part of the, what the property is.
But with all the respect.
None of the concrete prepared for us.
That hasn't even been graded, those pictures, the property wasn't even graded yet.
Well, how old are these pictures?
That's a great question.
How old are the pictures?
One was this past winter, um, I contacted Mr. Ferry because it's. What happens is when the water comes across the street, Hart Street freezes, turns into a complete shield.
They've always had that problem, yeah.
And it's, and I called Mr. Ferry because it's gotten worse since the property went up. And you can see in one of the pictures that the water's just pouring off their property and. Your construction has been in process now for multiple years, so it's.
I don't understand how that affects you in any way, I mean, I'm paying for.
Look at the pictures, look at my backyard.
We're on a hill, so everyone else's water is sloping down, it's not like we're creating the water.
I have neighbor.
What put up a retaining wall that's diverted the water?
We had to, the town mandated a wall.
The town made me put up a retaining wall.
Okay, you know, we're, we're not, we're not, I don't wanna go any further about the water, I, I think that's.
And our need has.
You think I wanted to pay twenty-five thousand dollars for a wall?
You, you need to be quiet to what we're talking.
But we have been attacked, sir.
You're not being attacked. We're not gonna go any further with the water, I think we're, we're gonna, that's gonna be Mr. Ferry that has to deal with that. Um, uh, one, I think, I wanna, guys, can I have, can I have those photos? I don't know how, what all these photos are, I'm gonna let you guys look at them, I don't think there's a, you have any reason to defend these. Because as far as I'm concerned, I know there's a water issue, but that's something that we have to go with Mr. Ferry about. But the, we ha, we have to go look at this property.
Yeah, you're welcome to uh, view the property, the property.
One of the things that I'm concerned about, and that we've always been concerned about, is what the, um, how it affects the neighborhood. And what are, what are, what are your neighbors going to see? Uh, and, and that's one of the things that you guys have to address. Uh, wi, whether it be with, with his property or, or anybody else's property as they, as they drive by. So one of the things that we've already determined that abrevieties are gonna have to go up. Um, now.
It's my pleasure to put up.
You've, you've already said that, so that's one of the things that we've already determined. Now, what other, what other uh, things are that, are gonna have to go up? That's gonna be up to Mr. Ferry and then I think Jim, right here is, is, he, he's itching to tell you what's gonna have to be.
I'd like to first answer Mr. Logan's uh, concern. Regardless of what's proposed, in order for me to issue a permit for this ground solar array, there will be four foot footings on this unit.
I just say on the water, I just know it's gonna settle.
It will not be a ballasted system, shallow depth.
Okay. All right.
With respect to the water, and I think I've visited all of you at one time, with respect to the water, the town is working on a plan.
Right.
To address the water issues, and we actually have a fairly definitive plan that's gonna address the runoff on both sides. Going towards the intersection and towards the Hart Street, uh, um, yeah, Mr. um, Finesse Brothers. The problem was, there was another drainage issue in town that took precedent over that, it wasn't that, it wasn't a priority. We had an issue on Main Street that needed to get taken care of, so Hart Street's been put off. But it will happen, we are gonna address the water issues.
This year, Jimmy?
It won't be this year, I'm sorry, but, but it will be, but it will be on for next year, so.
That's fine.
Main Street was a huge problem logistically, we had Zeneca involved after Zeneca, so we had, we had to do that one first.
Sure.
Unfortunately, it has nothing to do with zoning, and I don't wanna sound like we're passing the buck. But a, as much as it might be flooding, it might be water coming off their property. Our concerns are just what Jim said, that that thing is gonna be four feet deep so that it doesn't topple over and, and pull up out of the ground, okay, so that, that part is satisfied. Uh, we, we can't create more of a hazard, which is obviously not gonna happen, so that, that's the second issue. The third issue is that it looks aesthetically pleasing to the neighbors as they drive by, and, and that's a big concern for the board. Uh, that's probably the board's number one concern, so that, that the neighborhood, you guys live there, we, we don't. So we have to make sure that it's gonna be pleasant, pleasantly pleasing to your eyes and, and what we want is suggestions from you. This, this is a great thing that they wanna do, and, and put yourself in their shoes, and it was your yard, it was something that you wanted to do. What would you want it to look like, and what would you want to have your neighbors have it look like? Uh, so, that, that, those are the things that we want from you guys, we can't change the water problem, he's already told you that. And, and I don't wanna sound like I'm passing the buck, you've done a lot with taking these photos and we appreciate what you've done. Um, but unfortunately, that, that's not our jurisdiction.
It's not caused.
Nothing you've done has, has caused the water.
And we did put drains and we put all the appropriate drains in.
Jim spoke to us and we channeled something in our driveway.
Absolutely, absolutely, but, but you know what, we can't discuss the water anymore, we, we, we can't be here all night. Okay, so let's move on from the water, is it, who's next that wants to be heard?
Me.
Yes?
My name is Mark Silos, I live on twenty-four ninety, right on the corner.
Right on the corner, yeah.
I am a Hollis person. And my barn sits quite a bit higher than his house.
Sure.
I will guaranteed see those panels.
Yep.
From the top of my barn, you know, third, third floor barn, and it's much higher than his house.
Okay.
And even the rear of my property, I can see right down in there, and the Joyce and Tom, they are a lot higher than me. So they're gonna look right down in that, unless you put abrevieties at a thirty footers, you're gonna see that solar array.
Okay.
Period.
Yep.
Period.
Is it that farther, I mean, is it that terrible?
Does it have something?
One, one at a time, please.
It's solar panels.
You had your chance, let me speak.
No, they get, they get to respond to your comments, so, do you have something you, do you have something you wanna say in response to his question?
Yeah, I really wish they would have looked at our house.
Okay, so, no, okay.
I know, I just, it's solar panels, I mean, we're doing our best, we're gonna try to cover it. We're gonna be putting the abrevieties, we're gonna be, stop, stop.
No, okay.
I don't understand.
You can speak.
My name is Lisa Silos, um, that's my.
Yeah.
So, my extreme, you're saying you want it aesthetically pleasing to the neighbors.
Right.
So Joyce has pictures, Steven has pictures. There, there's nothing aesthetically pleasing about their yard and hasn't been for three years since they lived there. They haven't done one thing, they haven't done one thing to their yard.
No, stop, please, let them speak. Yep.
Including mow the lawn, they've never done anything.
Okay.
So I don't trust that anything about these solar panels are gonna be aesthetically pleasing to anyone.
See, here's the option, when we, if, when and if we approve it, or if and when we approve it. Um, i- is the chance that we now, is, is when we can say, if it's approved, this is what you have to do before it gets approved. You know, m- maybe it has to be abrevieties that grow thirty feet, um, you know, maybe it has to be moved from the front yard to the side yard. These are the things that, that, that we can write into the, they're called conditions. And, and this is why I'm asking you, what, 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 as neighbors, would you like? Something short of saying nothing at all, and, and that may be the possibility, I, I, I don't know. I, I don't think that's going to be the answer, so, you know, we're looking for possibilities. Maybe it's not exactly where it is, maybe it's moved to the, 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 the east or the west, well, it looks like this would be the west, a, a little bit more than where it is. So that you don't have to look right from your, your, your barn and, and see this, see this thing.
And, and as Steven said, uh, the trees that they're talking about, most of them are on our property now.
Yep.
They, I think just today, took down trees that, I, their, their solar array from our house.
Not on that side. We took the ugly dead trees that were on the right-hand side, up to the right of that.
It doesn't matter, it's our property, I can have them.
But first of all, we've only lived there a year and a half.
You need to, whatever you want.
Okay, whoa, 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 we're not gonna get into a shouting match, finish what you wanna say.
What, me?
Yes, please.
Oh, they're just, the trees that they say were there, they just took down this week, not so large, on the corner.
Yeah. Okay.
We, we had very ugly dead trees to the right of that, so we took.
Okay, so, so if you wanna respond, you, you took down dead trees, it's okay, I, it's, it's, absolutely, it's, it's nerve wracking and, and it's.
Sorry, sorry. It's frustrating.
I just wanna set the. I just wanna set the record straight, okay?
Yeah.
We came in, we're fairly young couples, okay?
Sure.
I've got four kids, all four and under.
We've had twins since we've moved in, so it's been very hectic, we've got four little babies.
Okay.
I'm not a party animal, we don't have people coming over causing trouble, but I've had nothing but issues since moving in here.
Okay, it's a lot of work.
Now, albeit it's all small stuff, but as you can see, this is my property, I mean, I'm hearing about water issues that I have absolutely nothing to do with.
Yeah.
Before we even moved in and had it graded.
I'm hearing about construction issues, which I pay an honest contractor, which you know the reason for the delay in the project, uh, the project.
It was not our fault, it was the contractor.
Was it my fault?
No, it was very, it was very term out, uh, it was a difficult process.
It was not our fault, we paid our bills, we were on time, it was our contractor who forced us to do this.
So, so, that wasn't my fault, now, actually, you guys pay a contractor, okay? And then they're not paying their subs, imagine how complicated that could get.
And it took a year and a half, two years to build a house.
So, it took me a long time to build the house, yes. Is the house in ISAR? By all means, drive down Hart Street, I don't think it's an ISAR at all, I think it's, it's a beautiful home. Will a ground array rack really bother someone? I mean, maybe every, everyone's different. I could care less if you have a floodlight, which I don't have one, honestly, it's probably one of my other neighbors, it's not mine. But I could care less if you do a solar array or you cut down a tree, I could care less if you put three hundred abrevieties.
Okay, you know, keep your directions over here.
No, I'm just, because generally speaking, I mean, I understand that some of these folks are my neighbors, which I've never met.
I, I, I understand. But you're responding to us, yes.
No, I know, but I, I'm just, I'm just letting you know that it hasn't been fair from, from the get-go.
Okay.
And I've had issues with walls and I've left people my phone number and they said, yes, I went to the town, and if there's another issue, I'll call you personally. But no, they go to the town again, so.
You put that wall up without even a permit.
No, no.
We came to the town.
He's speaking, wait a minute. This.
Cause I went to Jimmy and he didn't even know about it. Hey, they're speaking, you be quiet, okay?
And with all the respect, referring to that, I had a general contractor. And he was responsible for all permits, whether there's a licensed electrician wiring the house or not, I don't know, that's not my industry. That's why I pay a general contractor, that's why I pay.
Let's, let's, let's get, you're getting off the subject, let's get back to the.
No, but I, I have to say that, because the reason for this.
I understand.
It's not because it's an ISAR, it's a personal attack, that's why.
It's not because it's an ISAR, it's, this is a vendetta against me for no reason at all.
Okay, what, what I'm, what I'm, what I guess is, it sounds like to me the landscaping in the front yard is not done.
We're just starting this year, and unfortunately, it's been delayed too much because he's had to do the project in Swansea with the fire.
You're just starting, okay. Okay. Okay.
And now he's draining.
My checks are good, it's the contract that's giving me the verdict.
Okay. All right, what, what we're looking for and, and wanna handle is the solar array. Not whether you took down dead trees or, or, or the flooding issue, or, or whether you leave lights on. So, this is what I think is going to happen, I'm, I'm, I'm guessing, and I know I want to, is we want to walk the property. Uh, correct, gentlemen?
Yes.
Okay, so can we come up with a date and a time?
Can I speak?
In, in a second, so can we come up with a date and a time that we can meet at the property?
Just so you understand, this will be a public hearing.
Yeah, we're not closing the public input.
Right, so this will be a public hearing on your property and neighbors are invited to come also, so if they have any questions. I don't want anybody to get into a.
Yeah, no yelling.
Pissin' contest, quite frankly, over this, I want you to be the gentleman, the young lady, and the neighbors to be, but they have a right to be on your property and take a look at it.
Who, who's just gonna board, you mean?
No, that's fine, I don't care.
Well, we're gonna go with the solar arrays, we're, we're gonna go where the solar arrays gonna go, think maybe we can move it, we, hopefully you'd be able to be there at that, at that meeting, so.
That's not the point.
I've got nothing to hide.
This is not going to do this.
I really think we need to look at it, and I, I'd be voting against it, quite frankly, if I didn't, if you didn't give us that opportunity.
You guys are more than welcome to walk the property. Believe me, if, if you see my home, I want it to be aesthetically pleasing, I don't wanna look at solar panels myself.
Okay, well, obviously, okay, we can't do this.
I can't make the final one sadly.
We can't do it this weekend, uh, because it's Memorial Day weekend, um.
I can't make it June third, thanks.
Okay.
You can't or can't?
You cannot, can we do June tenth, guys?
No.
We can't do June tenth? About, about another day, um.
Keep in mind, the meeting will be on the twenty-first, so we're gonna. Make some suggestions, some proposals and that.
Yes.
I have a lot of new ideas.
Right.
We can be part of it because we're gonna.
Can we do it at nighttime, guys?
I'm good with that.
At nighttime, Bob?
I don't know, I'm open to this.
You don't wanna be there? Nighttime for you?
Sure, if they're gonna have a spotlight on, we can.
Winner, winner.
Can we do it during the day?
Can I get that?
We all work.
We all, well, some of us are retired, as you say.
Six thirty, I could do it.
What, what days or day we think it is?
Well, now we, now we're open for whatever.
What was, what's today, Ross?
Twenty-fourth.
Today's the twenty-fourth of May.
Yep.
Um. Can we do, it's six, number one, it's six thirty.
We can't, we're.
Pience.
If I'm gonna be away, it's something I can't do until.